But I'll introduce you real quickly. One of our presenters, Boal Jacob, the county board review. So he's just going to be going over presentations for you today. And then, Mayor, as a question, we'll be here to answer any questions you have afterwards. After we're done with that, I'd just like to let you know what we're doing here at the school to improve our playground facilities. We're working with the water reclamation district, Green Print Partners. Alex Hiddey is over here as well. We've been working on this project going on a few years now, probably, right? So this is something we've had going on and thinking about what we want to do. And our plans for that are out there. We got a little bit of student input. What this will do for you guys, though, is going to be able to allow us to have less water go into the storm sewers than are going there now and causing flooding and damaging and stuff. So with this project, we're attempting to bring all the water that's on our current playground and going into the storm sewers, be, go through a porous surface, be retained underground instead of going to your sewer system. But I'll explain more about that afterwards. I just thought, since we have you here, it would be a good opportunity to bring it out to the public and start letting you know what we have planned for next year. So we're waiting for different grant proposals and some other funding proposals that will come from the state or federal level and not be relying on our taxpayer dollars. So, you ready, Mayor? Boal, are you ready to start?
Well, good evening. We certainly appreciate everyone coming out, and I think this was a very important issue and concern of the community, this community and other communities as well. So we had to assess it to come out a month and a half ago. So this is the tax appeal, Commissioner Larry Rogers, also the commissioner, commissioner Steel. So they'll explain a little bit to you about the process. In my opinion, the appeal, just a temporary solution, appeal this time and then go back up the next time. So we actually, we're going to be looking for a more convenient situation to kind of keep the tax at as low as possible throughout the Southland. That being said, Boal Jacob.
Nope.
Probably the heat. It's a little cold, but we can hear it. Oh, it is a fan. There you go. What do you agree with?
So if you receive a decision from the board review, and if you are satisfied with it, you can file an appeal with the Illinois Property Tax Appeal Board. So you also have to use the board review to file that appeal. Then you have the Illinois Department of Commerce. They just want to know that you have a property that after, on the property tax, etc. And then you have the local government. You will also go to the department responsible for your tax information, and give the details of how it is. And they need to clarify the tax, and test it off to the end. You have the Cook County Board. You find the tax rate to be on the total tax rate. You gather Cook County Board, who's as far as your tax field, and then collect tax debt as a way, and as well as tax field. So your Cook County Assembly Office handles your appeal and your management. And website is cookcountyassessors.com. And their phone number is three one two four four three seven five five zero. While we're doing this presentation, if you find anything useful you wanted to add, please do. I would recommend, definitely, take the picture of their contact information if you don't have that. And let's also have the three most common exemptions. The first is the general home setting exemption, which is up to $10,000 from $7,000. And may you honor, unless your primary residence qualifies for this exemption. You'll also have the senior exemption, and this is available for any senior that's 65 years old or over. And then you have your senior freeze. And that senior freeze is for seniors that are 65 years old or over. That also includes the household income, 65,000 or more. When I say household income, that is everyone who resides in that home. So it's consistent with another, or connection, or any of the family, the whole household income, not be over 65,000.
Can you explain the senior exemption a little bit more thoroughly?
Sure. I'll be honest, the senior exemption, senior 65 years old or over, at the start of the year, you need to January one, your 65 years old, you qualify for a senior exemption. The difference between the senior exemption and senior freeze is that the senior freeze is in compliance. And that's the determining factor with the senior freeze. By both of them, it has to be your primary residence. There are a few additional exemptions, and they can be found at the Cook County Assessment Board. The most common part of the exemption is disabled benefit exemption, and then the disabled part of the exemption. This usually gives access to information, and if you would like to write that down. And let's look at how they text it. I know some of you are kind of waiting, never done this before, and it happened following on, because we want to make sure, and we encourage you, to make sure you are calculating your taxes, okay? So in our example here, we have an estimated market value of a home, which is being evaluated. The multiplier is a 10% assessment level. That's the only assessment level that we're going to review cultures, okay? So once you multiply it by 10%, you can propose a test valuation of 25,000. That brings an equalized score, which changes the age issue, and that's 3.31%. Once you have that factor, you're now set at $5,000, this is your equalized assessed value of the home. Now, this is sort of a combination. If you have a senior freeze, senior exemption, or home exemption, they'll all reflect it from this plan. In our example, it's just a home exception, which is $10,000. So we've done that, and it can adjust it equalized assessed value of 65,000 or $8,000. Now, this is a very difficult power to commit. So your township has that rate, and they, the county here, which we want to say. So now you have final estimated tax. Of $30,000, $735, and then initiated that. This is the older, or some of the highest, um, tax rates of the town. The heart force has the highest at 43.32%, followed by Riverdale at 32.72%, and then the township at 36.9%. And of course, your college at low is at 7.35%. And if anyone knows, I have a place on the town. So the lower this is, the higher the township, the less the residential tax burden. So in our board, they see a lot of the marketplaces in this weed area, and that's called the, that, that. So your first installment tax fee is 55% of your total tax field for the year. And if you follow the board review, and you receive reduction, your condition, how do you reflect it when you're first with the stock of field? It will all reflect this effect inside, okay? Now, look at, if you expect to stop a tax field, we consider this to be one of your most important. Now, that's just, we want you to do is take the time to verify that the information that the topic is correct. You want to make sure the classification, like your property is in line with the excessive hat, or the example, how they basically want to ensure that that's in line with the classification code you received, or if you have an add, if someone's involved. My wife, you can definitely, you can verify that, and if it's a, how you're possibly taxing, etc. I think what you want to do is look at the tax factor, which is what we just went over. Take the time, and you calculate it yourself. And I know, if I'm looking just on a, for a scale, or a haze, there, or a, for that factor, well, you should see that, and not already check it. But also, make sure you look at the important factors that. If you're looking at, have hours associated with your payment, or if that's a, that's a, that's a, you just need to be important after you check. Your board review was located in 18 North 5th Street in 601. Private address, remember, is three one two six zero three five four zero. And then if someone enters that phone, one, it's a private extension, which means nine and five, it's not a way to actually allow. They're all amazing, and you might just make evidence. Typically, you want to, um, file a appeal. And if you're looking for a field, if you are looking for a company with the same classification, similar source of footage, that's one of the similar ages, and your property. So if you have, or if you have a neighbor that is next door to you, you might have a classification of a school or three, but their classification might be a school five. So that doesn't necessarily mean a comparable school. When you're looking for comparable, you want to have the same classification, and you want to look for a source within 500 to 1,000 worth of these, considering. And maybe, maybe 50 years, so they can look at the property. Or if you want to do a sales compareable, look at sales that have three years. But these sales are also same classification, similar source of footage, as well as similar rating, okay? And if you want to prove, maybe, or of a prior date, that she's, maybe, have a date, which is pretty much a list of non-property related data. And if you have any, of a prior date, you can have to show, and you want to submit pictures, we ask that they go over at our time, and they get the home. And if you say that you're, um, because of the local, like, name of the, of the people on your home, the, and, 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 and,
Hi David. What's the deadline for you to be here, if you didn't mention it?
So for you to, so what we're doing is we're offering your community outreach as an opportunity to, if you leave your form with us this evening, so if you leave your form with us this evening, you will be filed in the morning, so when your form is open.
It's not open? So it's not open?
It's immediately filed.
Do you know when it's open?
Um, do not have that date yet.
Do you know if it'll be this year?
Yeah.
Till one o'clock, our next tax bill probably.
No, so anything that...
I want to know, you said it's 55, your first installment is 55%?
Yeah.
So why, why do I have a more than 55% increase on my second installment? So I started off with $1,600, and the second, my second installment was $4,500. That's more than 55%.
Your first installment is 55%. Your second installment is 45%.
So that should be 45% if you're... Yeah, that has to be, yeah. Okay, here's another thing. I'm sorry, I'm not trying to take over the whole thing, might, might, might help somebody. So if we're on social security, half a year, one quarter, I'm just going to say right now, one quarter of my income for the whole year goes to paying property taxes. How about my food and insurance that I have to pay? And things like that. Where, where is there, where is the equalization there for us? You have a senior freeze. How, when do we get that? There's never been any, well, there's probably is something published about a senior freeze. Are we able to get it now? How far back does it go? If you can, if you can backtrack it.
Well, I got a vote for Trump.
Oh, I know. I'm sorry, yes.
So if you want to... For this, 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 for this,
Do you have, do you have any information, if you're able, like sometimes in our property taxes, we can go back and, and collect some of the money if it's been over.
Yeah, so then you would want to file.
Okay.
So when Fritz K. Lynn, I had spoken to Scott Ness when they had come to the village. He said that when I do my appeal, I have to request a field check because he does believe there's an error of acceptance. But I don't see on that form, where does it say request a field?
Well, again, it's a different problem. So sometimes you go to a review, you go to the assessor's office. The assessor's office is the only one who does field check. So what you can do is go there, but that's something that's not available. People, because you want to have that expectation of you. Because it sounds like maybe they just classified or whatever. So that's really asking.
So I go, I can't have your assessment. Not this, not done at the board, and they don't give you a check. And now he has said it is open in September, but it wasn't, so when is our date?
Okay, so the assessor's office didn't have an appeal summary about, so maybe the end of the year, or the end of September.
Next month, maybe the twenty-fourth.
That's the exception, so they do write township.
Yeah, our township is open until the twenty-first.
Right, but they are conditioned one that she's talking about, but they did it.
Right.
But you didn't, they didn't, they didn't have that expectation. So I understand, we can talk about that.
So there's two fields you have, the bow is the assessor's office and the bow is the mortgage.
So if there is something to do with the bow.
So you don't need.
If there is a period of time where the, uh, that doesn't have, it is, um.
Hey ma'am?
Yeah.
Uh, this doesn't apply to me so much, but there's several seniors that live around me, two blocks away. I'm not going to throw their names under the bus. But they haven't paid any real estate taxes at all in the last five, six years. Why? They're scared, they're scared as hell they're going to get back bills from you guys and you guys have all the power, they have.
Well, the, 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 that's, that's a issue to see. But there's a, 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 Brian Henry means why they might not be able to do that. Some, um.
You don't know why though?
I'm saying it depends on your personal situation. I can't see that. So some people, if they were a senior, did a senior freeze, um, you know, they, they're very few people that they live that may only pay five dollars, a hundred dollars.
That's ridiculous.
And you also might have had a veteran exemption on there. You know, if you're, just say they're, you don't want to, taxes up to two hundred and fifty dollars, probably ten thousand.
So you don't have the answer for me tonight?
No, I'm saying, it depends on the personal situation, you can't see that.
You guys are scared the hell out of them, man.
Look at the property tax deal with them, and maybe you can help them decide what's happening with this by looking at their tax calculator, see if there's any exemptions on there that might be.
No, I think government's just decided and we can't make any sense out of it. Thank you.
There are some people, there are some people, they are completely exempt. I mean, as she said, it might be a veteran, just even a veteran or whatever. There are several people, especially seniors, they aren't paying.
No, they've been paying taxes for years and years, five, six years ago. All of a sudden, the government stopped taking taxes from them. They're scared as hell that they're going to get hit with another bill because the government decide, you know what? Either they screwed up. They don't, they don't want to open the can of worms, do you guys? It's not an outstanding tax bill. They took it out of their, they took it out of their checking account six years ago. For a second installment, they put it back in, and they didn't say why.
We should go to the assessor's office.
I wouldn't open my mouth either.
I'm sorry, can you need more help with that?
If you had a place like in our house, we were assessing, we were assessing for three bedroom on the house, we haven't had that, we would usually.
She might answer that anyway, I think. The office isn't even open for this yet. Huh? You heard her, no. You know what this is? This is political. It's a shame that you can't even hear her, right?
And you want to have to do something similar, a field visit, because you might be misclassified. But typically, if the square footage is the same, and you are looking at your tax calculator based on that square footage, it might actually be happening.
We tried that in July, talked to the person who was going to call us back the next day. He has never called us back. And we tried today, and it finally got through.
Wonderful.
I'm sorry?
Wonderful, wonderful, did you talk to someone? Did you finally get through, so did you talk?
But that's ridiculous, the way that law.
Would it constitute classification in terms of it being misclassified? Or would it be, and just hopefully the assessor can make no changes for you. So I know that they said they'd call you, and they didn't call back. And sometimes I got that, you know, call back, and then you call off. And make sure, by the way, they didn't want to, they didn't refer to you, what exactly you did. Any other questions? So once you're down, you'll go right on, this is your turn to, once the, the eighty theory of appeal to be processed, and then you'll receive a determination letter. So let's just say, five, nine, between. We're not sure if they did. We're done with the process, you'll receive a letter for the determination, that's all. So, yes, I'm sorry.
I just like to say a comment. All the older, the older people, they should, they should have every need that they, that they, that they need to be fulfilled by the government. Because they worked their whole life to get to their age. And if they don't have the resources to feel, fulfill their necessities, what is the older people gonna do? I mean, I'm thinking in the future because, you know, I'm getting older too, and I'm going that way. So what is going to happen, if this is happening to them at this time, what is going to happen to us when we retire? Now, there's a, there's my comment. And the other thing is that the taxes, the taxes for the properties are really so expensive. And it's the origin, not the, what is happening, but it's in the origin of the taxes is where everything comes. I mean, everybody, if the older, older people is struggling, the new generations also are struggling to, you know, we have to work two, two jobs to, to fulfill our necessities. And, I mean, I'm not complaining.
It's unfortunate, it's kind of circumstances, I think we're all in it, you know? No one was expecting such a large hike, and then to only be given a short turnaround to make the payment. And I think that, that needs to be heard loud and clear, it not happening in the fastest way. But I know that the assessor's office is trying to get things like bring back, so you break the pursuit of assistance and other different avenues to help. Um, there's also a payment plan that the assessor's office is doing. But I know that there's always your payments in this group. Yes, you know, but if you're paying your property out, right, you need more time. So they're well aware of everything that you're talking about, and we're just trying, I guess, catch up to get the laws and.
May I say something else? Well, that's, that's my, my point. See, the problem is not that you gave us. The problem is not that, that you guys or the government give us, you know? The problem is that the taxes themselves is the problem.
Yeah.
You know, the taxes for the property are too much. It's not that they are, como they are to pay next year, to pay another year, it's the, just themselves, I mean, they have to hold down at some point to increase and increase and increase in the salary. Look, what is people with fifteen dollars, how are they going to own a house? Or how is people with twenty dollars per hour, how are they going to own a house?
It's, it's a challenging situation for me. This is a state issue in terms of the state statute, in terms of how the tax, property taxes are set. So in that though, I can't stress this enough, I know the right thing to advocate, to say this is the issue, but it has to be done with grand, with grand reporting. Um, the board review, we're here to hear that, to say, hey, we try to create a lasting effort so, where if you feel like you were over assessed with the assessor's office, and you weren't successful, to say, hey, let's have another party look at it with a different lens, to see if we can give some form of reduction, or see if you actually were over assessed. So everyone I see that's trying to do that, essentially, has to hold our elected officials accountable.
Yes, speaking of.
I, I say like this, I get one check, I'm, I'm just tired, I said, it's three years old, hey, I'm, and I have one check. Now, if I want to live in that house for ten more years, I have to find sixty thousand dollars, and that's just minimal, because the taxes definitely will go up. So where am I going to find sixty thousand dollars to live in there for ten years?
Unfortunately, I don't have that answer, ma'am, yet.
Yeah.
Is the cost, is the price the same for both of them?
I think it's a different percentage breakdown. But I know, like, for instance, if you're a disabled veteran, and say you are at seventy-five percent versus a hundred percent, that I think there, there is, there is a barrier, but I'm just, I'm familiar with what it is in terms of how they calculate that. But I do know if it's a hundred percent, in your home, that's about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a letter, you don't pay any property tax.
Hey ma'am?
For a veteran disengaged, as well as a veteran not disengaged, but that's, how they calculate.
Yes, yes.
And the only way you will find out how to calculate is.
The assessor's office, yes.
And they will just give you that information.
Yes.
Or just send you online and say, you have to put in this.
No, 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 if you call the assessor's office and you get someone on the phone, they'll help you understand how that's.
Ma'am, ma'am, to piggyback up off what he was talking about with the seniors, your flyer said that we can, you guys will address our, any kind of financial concerns? Well.
I don't know about that.
Well, that's what your flyer said.
What is that?
You, you understand, it comes, it goes right with that. Back in May of eighteen, they, they tripled our water rates, but at the same time pumping the seniors, they took away the senior exemption. And it's not always about the real estate tax. It's about when you get the money, as any mayor, what do you do with it? He went, and you took away mayor. No, I know, but. The flyer said that you were the dress down.
Uh, I, I didn't do the flyer, I'm with the board of review, I'm not with.
But that's all, you're representing the flyer. Mr. Fulk, I was just talking, but she said it addressed you with it. The senior exemption that you took away back in, on May of eighteen, would you consider bringing that back to the seniors?
Senior exemption we took away.
You took away the senior exemption for water, they got half off water. She said to dress you because it has nothing to do with her.
That's for another time.
Would you consider giving it back to the seniors? Because they're kind of hurt. Mr. Fulk, you won't talk to me in meetings, I'm asking you now. This is a lot of real estate tax money, which is. You are a piece of work, Fulk. Oh, you're a piece of work, you're quite a coward, sir. None of, none of us can hear you.
Yes, if you do a property tax, so if you want to do your property taxes, build a format, and you believe without.
Twenty eighteen, when you tripled our water. He took, he took away the senior exemption. The mayor, and he had his pockets of green down, they, they all. That's a more popular, that's which one you're going. He can hear me. He's being a coward. Hey Steve? What is that? That white thing up there on the ceiling?
Who you leave, are you learning, a little bit, and just protect, watch game, and, and maybe block his gym class, and they could, kind of interact on the good, and they could let you get, it's touch that to the people, you know, they, they. We became team against team, and then. That's very good.
If you want to have it, just consider it ready for free filing, basically, I'll drop it about tomorrow, and you're already queued, ready. So you can file online if you like, we give that option, if you want to be able to go back and, you can do that. But there really, you know, it really is not a difference, but, you know, honestly, this is for free filing. Okay, yes.
We thank everybody for coming to have your attention. Could I have everybody's attention? We have a referendum on ballot, and I'm going to ask these voters for it. The village to run up, have the resolution, and it's a state of bill, and pay more to watch taxes in the South Summer, and therefore, if that's, if you're looking on a whole, so we ask that you vote, vote yes in that resolution. Some ideas exploded throughout the Southland, that, that maybe, maybe some of the school just, if they closed, to combine the states' costs, so that idea's being floated around as well, and to combine them, and also, we have to, we vote for that resolution, we pass it, and nine further municipal houses also have that on the ballot, and coming next election, I'm sure that that will be moved. Thank you very much, I think it's.